Oh, yeah. It is. I wish all the community.
Just recently, it was... Was it when he adopted, like, from the streets or something?
Mine was my own, which is even worse.
I feel traumatized.
Well, because they didn't treat... My vet said I would lose my veterinary medical license if I treated a dog the way you were treated at Sparrow Hospital, which is, I mean, that's what's scary. And one of the docs that finally actually dragged me out of the hospital and sent me to Ann Arbor on an ambulance, said... I came back and told him I can move my arm and whatever, and he said... And this blew me away. He said, "Lancy is 30 years behind or something in that." I want to have to send me... I mean, all I'm missing is that I have strength.
Yes.
If I hadn't been as strong as I was when I had...
But if you... I think you work at it though continuously.
Yeah. I put in a sidewalk when I had it. But then I put myself in the experimental drug that got it better and fought with Ann Arbor.
That was shocking to me that you figured that out.
And well, and my own doctor prescribed it because he was ahead of me.
Yeah.
He's brilliant. I had the funniest...
Yeah, he's feeling better, he said. Don't know that will happen.
I sent a girlfriend of mine to my doctor. He's just really ahead of most. And like, he didn't even have to research it. He knew it. He said I should write an article to Pfizer. But it makes osteoblasts. He said, "You need to call Pfizer." Yeah, it was making it so... Yeah. Well, after two years of nonunion. And so, anyway, I sent this friend my...
It looked like the blocking attack.
Diane well...
He was... He's always been a lion.
I got a roper. Cousin who's a master's degree in nursing was visiting for the weekend. And so, Diane wrote back. She said, "I'm finally going to..." And I said, "Well, she and I just..."
I thought we were going to roll off the horse, donkey.
It was so funny. And I said, "Read your last note." I said... So then I told the PA in the office what she said. I just... It was one of those things that was just... Some of the funniest things in the world are misprints. Oh, yeah. Autocar is terrible, especially when you're speaking.
I'm afraid I didn't set your time up for five minutes.
No, it doesn't. You can't do it.
No, you don't show that. I'm going to tell the meeting to order at, what is it, 6:40? I was going to say about 43. I have a good call meeting to order, 6:43. Hopefully, we'll get along and we'll be one of those 10 o'clock jobs. Civil reflection, too.
Maybe that's why. Thank you. All right, civil reflections. Then we're going to have a pledge of allegiance and then a moment of silence. Oh. Boy, that was quick. She reminded me attendance. Roll call. Hang on a second.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Chandler here. Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Fions Bless?
Here.
Ms. Rosgren?
Here.
Mr. Rosgren. Ms. Callerman?
Here. Now we'll go to two. Sorry about that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. Item three, approve the agenda. I have a motion, but... Go ahead. No. Okay. All right, because I have an emotion, but I also have an amendment to it. So I'll let somebody else make a motion.
Marie, I didn't hear you talking down at table that way.
I know. I hate this setup, but...
What's your motion?
My... No, I said I would do a motion, but I'll wait if somebody else wants to do it, to approve the agenda, because I have an amendment.
I have an agenda. Okay.
All right, do we have a motion to accept the agenda?
I move accept the agenda as printed.
I'll second that.
And I have a discussion, which I have. What I would like to change, where it says committee appointments, 11, for those that are following it, B as in boy, capital B. It talks about the recommendation for Deb Johnson, and we'll go through that. But it had the term expiring... I don't remember. If I did that, it was my mistake. The term expiring 31 of 23. I actually wanted it 31 of 25. I'm not sure where Kathy Aldrich came in. It should read Kim Faulds. And that's termination for her, or her termination date is 12/31 of 25.
I would agree with that.
So that's my amendment. Is there any other amendments to the agenda? Okay, so... Got it? Okay.
Will you accept that amendment?
Well, that's what they're going to vote on. So you're going to vote?
No.
That's my amendment.
We made it a motion to accept the agenda as printed.
And I said I had a motion.
And Alan said you seconded that.
And I said for discussion, and I had an amendment to it.
So then I would have to amend my motion...
All right, let's vote on my amendment. Let's vote on...
You have to make a motion.
I'll amend my motion to accept your agenda change.
There you go. Second. Yep. Got it? Good.
Mr. Fions Bless?
Yes.
Mr. Rosgren?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Ms. Callerman?
Yes.
All right, I have disclosure of a conflict of interest. Doesn't appear to be none. Public statement one, and this is designated for the agenda.
Hi, Ray Kotke, Park Lake Road. Item 14, AA, big A, little a, the capital improvement plan. I just wanted to, as a private individual, I'm also on the planning commission, but this is me privately, I strongly advise you to put at the highest priority the security and locks update, modernization, if you will. I think that, without question, is by far the most important upgrade or use of ARPA funds that we could ever, ever do, if that's where you decide to get the money from and if it's applicable. So, thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thanks, Ray.
The first thing I want to say isn't actually on the agenda, but it's always on the agenda because we're paying attorneys to sit here. Is there a reason why our attorney is not up front? Pre Dan White teach, whenever we had an attorney in our meetings, they sat up at the front so they could answer questions versus walking from the other side of the room. And I know it's not intentional, but the last question she answered, she answered from her chair, not at the microphone. You can't hear her. Last meeting, we were here and she... There was other kiosks, and then she was speaking, and I couldn't hear her. It felt like she was yelling at me from the other side of the room, but I'm sure that's not what she was doing. There's no reason that she's not sitting up here at the desk.
I've offered that.
And she refused?
She didn't refuse. She's made her decision to sit where she's sitting at the...
Well, I think this board needs to take action to move her up to the kiosk where she belongs, first of all. And with her being here, and that being said, I'm glad that it only took us eight minutes to decide what to do with our next special meeting. We're making progress on getting things done. Next comment I have is about assistant clerk. I'm getting really concerned about all the full-time people we've been adding in the last three years. I don't even know how many new full-time with benefits employees we've added. Karen, you probably know. And I'm not referring to police officers. I'm referring to office staff and maintenance staff and assistants to the assistants. I don't know why this could not be a part-time position. And also, with the assessor, I have always spoken on behalf that she's an assessor for four townships, yet we are the township that pays her benefits. And she works for us part-time. With this transition, why don't we put her where she should be as a contract laborer and train the other person to be here? She can still do the same job she's doing now, and we can save ourselves a lot of money and possibly free up some more office space. I think it's ridiculous that all these years we have paid her why she supervises or why she assesses four townships. Why are we carrying the burden of her benefits? If she's looking at retiring, and you know, right here, you're looking at adding another to another full-time clerk, another full-time to the assistant to the assessor, a police officer, I don't have an issue with that one. And Brenda, I'm sure you're aware by now, but you have an error in your minutes under workplace safety, motion by trustee Callerman. The motion was to put Marie back in her office. And I do not understand why that has not been done. I believe that falls back on Karen. I think it's been Karen's decision to not put her back in the office.
Karen.
I would ring the mother's chair. Judy Gardi, Park Lake Road. This is about 13BD. Karen has included some information for you to consider regarding the opening of the senior center on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Currently, we have a game in there on Tuesdays and a tournament in there on Thursdays. The tournament is a euchre tournament. Euchre is a game of skill. Poker is a game of chance. Poker is considered gambling. Euchre is just considered a tournament because it's skill versus chance. We are hoping that the senior center would open on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 9:00 to 4:00, and that the euchre tournament would be allowed to continue. It is one of our most popular activities at the senior center. You will see, if you look at this statistics, too, that our meal program is growing tremendously, and there's a lot of support for the continuation of our success at the senior center, even without offering meals on Tuesday and Thursday. We are looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you, Judy.
Nancy Hoyland, Webster Road. I, too, would like to refer to the gaming, euchre, and specifically. I called the state of Michigan, Michigan.gov charitable gaming the other day, and they tell me that euchre tournaments are not gambling. Our paid-to-play euchre tournament is a game of skill, much the same as a golf tournament is a game of skill. It is not illegal. We pay an entrance fee, and all of the monies collected are divided up and paid out to players. Playing euchre is a way for people to socialize and keep their minds active. Senior bingo is also not illegal. No money is kept. It is all given back as prize money. These games are what our people enjoy, and they should be allowed to happen. Trust me, I enjoy the free bingo, the same as others do, and I wouldn't want for that to be taken away, as some people don't want to play for money, and that should be their choice. I just think we should be providing activities for our seniors to get out of the house and stay active. We should, once again, have bingo tournaments as well. We could have cribbage tournaments. Let's keep our seniors active, socializing and playing games. It keeps our minds active. Also, it isn't our goal to... Isn't it our goal to grow the senior center? In my search for answers, I called the Michigan charitable gaming division, who told me that euchre tournaments are a game of skill and therefore are not illegal. When I mentioned that our tournament fee is only $4, and of that, we are required for our township superintendent to pay the township $1 for each player, the person that I spoke with said, "That's 25% of the tournament entrance fee. That sounds like extortion." So she also told me that senior bingo is not illegal. And I have more information that I can provide. I just don't have it with me at this moment. I'm just disappointed because I moved to this township. I built my house in this township because I enjoy the senior center and the activities, and we're not having them. I'm sorry. I'm disappointed.
We're going to...
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you, Nancy.
All right, Rick.
As you all know, I sat up there right in the chair that Joe Bensy's sitting in for four years. I sat in the chair that Marie Howes is sitting in as chair of the DDA for another four years. And I understand that sometimes it's a pretty thankless job. But sometimes there are great victories that you can do and will do that are a big plus for everyone. I also understand that people come up to this podium to register their complaints, and I know you get tired of hearing that. But I don't understand the contempt for the people who voted for you to speak out when you're screwing up. I don't get it. Joe, I'm not part of a peanut gallery. That was shameful. I can't believe that publicly you would disrespect me in such a way. I don't deserve that. I'm not part of a peanut gallery. I'm not a bobblehead who just goes along with the flow. I could call any one of you guys that. I didn't do that. I didn't come up here to insult you. I explained to you that you have been messing up. You're not trying to mess up with the Open Meetings Act, but you do. And your lawyer is leading you right down the wrong path, because I don't think she's taken the time to read the Secretary of State's printout on that. She's wrong. I've asked her several times. She won't give me an answer because she doesn't have to talk to me because I'm just a member of the peanut gallery, apparently. And then if I press the issue, she pretends like I'm being aggressive to her and says, "I'm going to walk to my car now," as if I was attacking her. You guys all know me. That was the biggest bunch of horse shit I've ever seen. If you feel like you're being intimidated now, then it's sad for you. I sure wouldn't want to live my life that way. Please get rid of the contempt for the people who voted and put you in these offices. I always answered any question that was posed of me. Didn't I, Ken Church? Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Is there anybody else for...
Kenny Church, Clark Road, eighth generation. It's my favorite line. Most of the time, we get up here and we shake our fists and we tell you how angry we are at something you've done that we think is wrong. But I want to point something out. It's not on the agenda, but it's already something that happened in this meeting, and I want to use an example from the meeting we just had. With all the stuff, hoopla, that's been going on against Marie, tonight she went by the rules there and wanted to amend something that easily could have been done beforehand by just saying, "Hey, I want to change this real quick." Rules of order are meant to establish order. It's not meant to keep everybody at the end of a whip. And I'll point out the, as Cindy mentioned, the eight-minute discussion you guys had on what to do with the next special meeting. Only one time, it was right at the end, when Ryan asked to be recognized, and Marie recognized him, and that's completely appropriate after the previous behavior. But the rest of you, including supervisor, all spoke. No one, when Marie brought it up, received the chair recognition to take the floor. Nobody said, "I have something to say," and Marie didn't recognize anybody. "Ms. Callerman, you took the charge," and off you went, which is fine. And when other people wanted to interject, nobody asked, "Ms. Callerman, would you yield for a question? Would you yield for a comment?" Because rules are meant to maintain order, but you can have civil debate, which you guys did, and it was so amazing and so joyous to see you guys all talking courteous to one another, and you got the job done. I appreciate that. Well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else for public statements? All right, item six, you're on. It's the only one I recognize. Our commissioner.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. Dwight Washington, Clark Road. And it's always engaging to see civil discussion and people voicing their opinions, and hopefully we all, like, listen and learn from one another, because I think that's really where our group, our community is strongest. It's a pleasure. It's a great township to live in, and, you know, I'm very thankful to be here. And the rest of the greater Lansing area is really watching Bath and seeing what's going on. As I go to different meetings, there's a, you know, there's a strong interest in Bath right now, and I think that's really commendable. And what we do in these public meetings is all on television and the media, so like, the whole community sees it. It's always really surprising how many people say, like, you know, "Did you see what happened?" And they tell me that they saw on YouTube, and, you know, the word is really getting out. Even people from other states have tuned in to see what's going on with us, and it's I think it sets a high bar for us to be leaders and example setters. But I'm here today to give a little bit of update on what's going on in the county commissioners, and it's been a really busy spring, and I can't even believe summer's, like, already over yet, so it just blows my mind. But I just wanted to give some, kind of like, quick updates as to what's been going on. And I'll try to make this as brief as possible. One thing that has been really taken up a great deal of the Board of Commissioners' time is the property in Eagle, and that's a very contentious issue that the federal government and the state government hasn't invested interest in creating a battery or a chip plant, and it's although it hasn't been officially decided what that's going to be, there's been a lot of interest. And many of you may know that the Eagle community is really bothered because they feel that it's an intrusion upon their quality of life to have a factory there, and through that, there's been a lot of discourse and discussion that's really testing the principles of private versus public property, and that dialogue in itself is just very intense, and people are very passionate about it from both sides. And so that while they have decided to form their own zoning committees and remove themselves from allowing the county to do it, they're struggling to figure that out, and they're seeing that it's much more costly than they would have expected. So that's still kind of a very open case and could be decided in many different ways. I also wanted to update you to let you know that our prosecutor has been a little bit behind in some of his cases, and there's been a concern as to how they're handled. We've done a study to look at what other prosecuting offices are doing across around the state, and we've provided more resources so that he can more effectively keep up and up to date with the necessities of his job. I wanted to point out that, as you may know, that the broadband, we did not get the grant that we were hoping to, and we were 3.5 points from getting that. So it was very close, and we're hopeful that in the future, we'll be able to apply for different grants and be more successful. What we learned is that there was a lack of opportunity zones. There really weren't enough underserved people being... who will be served by this broadband initiative in our area. And also, we didn't have enough matching dollars to go along with it. So those are things that we're trying to, like, address and to improve so that it would be more effective next time. I'd also like to say that the pandemic put a lot of people in economic hardships, and the state government, through Department of Health and Human Services, provided Medicaid, Medicare, or Medicaid for people. And now that's being, over the last couple of months, it's been... They're redetermining those fundings. So people who might have gotten a lot of, like, you know, a fair amount of money in the past, they could be cut down significantly. So there's been a great deal of struggles and hardships for people trying to feed themselves and pay their rents. And additionally, the Department of Health and Human Services is struggling to get people to work for them, so it's really been a bottleneck effect there. But they are working hard, and they're extending it for another month so that their hopes that nobody will be uncovered. And so there are a lot of people who are very anxious and struggle... concerned that they're not going to make it. So we're still in a crisis period right now, and we're hoping and trying to support them as best that they can. As you all... Many of you should know that, again, that people are watching Bath primarily. A big reason for that is because of the Chandler Road extension that the state has given us money to develop, and so the infrastructure in Bath is also something that's brought attention to Bath. And I would like to add that because of Park Lake and the geese, I think it was determined that were contaminating the water with E. coli, the public health department formed a position and practice where they would, like, monitor the beaches. And so that, over the Fourth of July, was that instrument or that method was very valuable because on the Fourth of July, there was a sickness outbreak in Clinton Lakes at Moles Park, and the public health department went there, and there was concern that there was some stomach virus that was going around affecting people that may have been in the water. And so they were able to, because of the work at Park Lake, they were able to be right on top of that and get to the bottom of that and resolve it before public ideas spread too fast and they weren't... And although they weren't substantiated, it was something in their food, and it wasn't the lake. So we were proud that at least we had the public health department on top of that, and I think we really can re-credit Park Lake for setting them in motion to do that. The last two things I'd like to note is that there is a free zoo day on Saturday, 26, and that's for community mental health, and they're really trying to bring the community together and to really rally around people who have mental health issues and remove some of the stigma that can be associated with that. So at the zoo, people are invited to go for free with their children. They're encouraged to go and be part of that community. They're encouraged to go and be part of that community. And then for also in the greater Tri-County region, there's a unity in the community at four o'clock at Hawk Island Park that people are invited to be, and get to know one another and just be part of the larger community and eat hot dogs and popcorn and other, other goodies. And that would be my report today. Are there any questions?
Is the county's broadband strategy then just to wait until the next round of Roman grants?
Yes, there's, yes. We were looking to see what the money is available and hopes that we can pursue that. And when that goes through, I guess we'll have to make other decisions. And you know that the consulting agency that we've had has been very on top of things and given us information as to what's happening.
Did the consultants get paid even though we didn't get the grant?
The consultants got paid even though we didn't get the grant.
One quick question, hopefully. When do, when do you expect that first phase for broadband to go into effect? Even though we weren't part of it, when do you expect? Is there an answer to that? Okay.
There's still hopes that we can get money from the state?
I understand that. I'm talking about the ones who already got it. What is their drop dead date when, if that's the right way to look at it?
I'm not sure about that.
Okay.
You're talking about the other counties or communities that received it?
The ones who actually were successful and receiving. We don't know when broadband will come to them. Okay, thank you.
It's a wonderful community, great natural environments, and I hope you all have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, for your time. I don't think we have any other county, state, federal. We're going to go to item seven on your agenda, which is the consent agenda.
I move to accept, accept the A's, consent agenda.
Second.
Now you get to pick which one. Okay.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Keasbliss?
Yes.
I didn't hear who the second was on there. I thought it was Mr. Benzie.
He had to fly.
Okay, so it was Ryan. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, item eight is the approval of the minutes. And we have A and B, so we have two. One is for the special meeting and one is for our regular meeting of August 7th. Yes.
I move to approve both the minutes from the Board of Trustees' special meeting, August 7th, 2023, and the regular meeting, August 7th, 2023, as presented.
No, I disagree.
Second.
Discussion? I'll discuss if you don't.
I have discussion. I made the motion and it is on tape on page seven of the regular meeting. It's absolutely clear as a bell. My motion was to restore supervisor's house to her office. Simple and clear. This is not accurate. It is not what we agreed upon.
And if there's any misunderstanding of what trustee Kellerman's saying, this was the August 7th. And I too viewed that video just to make sure. And I too will agree with what she's saying. It says return the supervisor to her office tomorrow, which would have been the 8th. And at this stage, that hasn't been done. So I think what you're saying, go ahead. If you're saying to change the minutes so that they reflect?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have a question?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Yes.
Brenda will have to go back and look at the.
That's correct. And that's put down for August 7th. When it was viewed, so that it's corrected. So the motion is to accept it?
No, the motion, we'll have to.
We'll have to put it on hold. Yeah. So you're going to pull your motion or?
Brenda, is that what you prefer?
I would like to listen to that.
Okay, then I request a removal of my motion.
We can separate them, can't we?
We can separate.
Okay.
Do you want to make another motion to accept the special meeting? To separate them or do you want to keep them together?
Sure, I can do that.
Okay, well, that's.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees' special meeting for August 7th, 2023, as presented.
Second.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes, I had an amendment for that, but.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Keasbliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
And then you'll put in the minutes, that the minutes for the Board of Trustees' regular meeting. I'll bring it back to the next meeting. All right, item nine, we have approval of the vouchers.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers as submitted.
Second.
Ms. Howe?
No.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
No.
Mr. Keasbliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes.
And that would be a five to two vote for acceptance, correct? Okay. We have item 10, which is the Treasury report. Apparently there is none.
Not at this time.
Bless you. Okay, committee appointments. That would be for me. You should have in your packet a resignation from, he says Daniel Kramer, but Dan Kramer, from the Planning Commission. And he made that effective the end of this month.
I'll make a motion to accept Dan Kramer's resignation from the Planning Commission. I'd also like to say he's been a very, very valuable chair of the Planning Commission for many, many years.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Okay.
I just have a question.
Yes.
You're still using your personal email instead of the township email to accept resignations?
I don't use the township.
It's township government business and you're not using it.
No.
Okay, just my clarification, you're still not using the township's email?
I am not using Bath Township's email. I'm using my own personal at this time until I get my office back. Okay, is that clear? Thank you. Okay. So we have a motion to accept resignation of Dan Kramer.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Keasbliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
All right, I'm also put in a recommendation again for Deb Johnson to the Senior Center Advisory Board. And that has been changed to her expiration date would be 12/31/25. Now, this is a motion to rescind, so I'm going to read this so that not only can the attorneys pick it up, but so everybody else can pick it up. This one comes from, hang on, I wrote it on the side, Ms. Ann McFarland, who is a professor of a registered parliamentarian. So what she says, that Robert's rules make it easy to reintroduce a defected motion at a future meeting. This was her, her words. It says, we've laid out the constraints on tackling something again during the same meeting. In contrast, Robert's rules makes it easy to reintroduce a defendant motion at a future meeting. Okay, if you want a copy of this, I can make sure you get it. And this is called, this is called renewing the motion. Okay? All a member has to do is to request that the motion be placed on the agenda or bring it up at the right time during a future meeting, provided notice requirements have been met. This comes as a surprise to some. An elected official wrote that colleague once said, don't move a motion that you know will fail because if it fails, we cannot bring it up again. This is absolutely not true, according to this parliamentarian. And it says, of course, it goes on to explain, says, of course, if you bring something up again over and over, you run the risk of sounding like a Johnny one-note, I'm not sure I understand that, but some of you may, and alienating, alienating your colleagues. In fact, some local governments have introduced a restriction on this. So obviously the board can do that. Saying that a motion defeated at a meeting can only be renewed at a later meeting if a majority of a governing body agrees to do so. So think about that. I'm sure you will. Got it? Okay, for a period of one year. So you can make that motion good for a year. Your local government rules and procedures have a higher authority than Robert's rules. Of course, we all know that. So I am going to reintroduce, renew the motion to accept Debbie Johnson. But someone has to, I'll make that motion, to serve on the Senior Advisory Board expiring December 31 of 2025. Can I comment? Yes.
I did get to meet her and she's delightful, guys. She's really, I think will be a great addition. And her middle name is Church, in case you didn't know.
Yeah. Is there a second?
I can second it.
Okay. Discussion.
I know that Al had some concerns last time. I'm wondering if those have been taken care of so we can move forward or how he's feeling about that?
Yeah, I'm ready to go for it.
Okay.
Thanks.
So apparently that's been taken care of.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
That's okay. I was doing research and I was just wondering, because I couldn't find anywhere, why the Senior Center Committee and the Art Committee have nine members when everybody else has seven?
Who knows?
Okay, I just didn't know. I was wondering. It was a board decision at some point in time.
Way back when, whatever.
Okay, I, I just didn't know if we, you know, go back to. Okay. You did this when she was here?
We increased, that's true, we did increase the senior.
Do we have a reason?
The reason for increasing it by one was the fact that they needed one. And that was their, their determination.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? All right, ready for a vote?
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Keasbliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
All right, that recommended, recommendation passed. Yes, December 31, 25. Item 12, which is the Township Committee reports, there appears to be none. Unfinished business. Items for discussion appears to be none. Items for action. This is mine. Supervisor requests for reimbursement of her personal legal expenses. All right. How much time do we have? As much as you need. Let me start at the beginning. The very beginning of this whole issue that came about. I was never contacted until the law enforcement officer, the trooper from MSP, let me know that I was going to be interviewed. And at that time, I asked him, interviewed for what? So he told me that there apparently had been a complaint made. From my standpoint, a human resource individual should have called me in and talked to me and said, you know, you've had this problem, as you all know. And now you have a complaint, official complaint. So we need to talk. Of course, that didn't happen. The attorneys did not call me to ask me my side. The board did not call me. So from that time on, which would have been 2022, I had no discussion whatsoever from anybody as to what was happening. As time went on, the legal fees added up and they continued to grow. There were numerous places that human resources could have come in and stopped the whole thing. Not only from the beginning, but from the time that the complaint went in, all the way through, it could have been stopped. And it wasn't. So what ended up happening was into court, we had to go, and it still wasn't stopped. And it was their film, theirs being the township's film, that supposedly was showing that I struck an individual, one of our staff people. That didn't happen. We enhanced, we being my husband and I, through our own expense, enhanced the video to make sure that it was going to show what I knew it was going to show, and it did. And the judge opinion was kind of an interesting opinion. And through that, I was found not guilty. So what I'm asking for is reimbursements of my total expenses. Now, this would be what came out of my pocket, not what came out of yours as property owners for your taxes. But this is what came out of my pocket. And that's, I think, what trustee Kellerman was alluding to. Thank God I have the resources to do that. So my reimbursement comes to $20,102.10. And that's what it cost me personally for defending myself for something that could have and should have been taken care of at the very, very beginning. So it never would have reached the position that it reached. So I am asking, because I was falsely accused of a criminal assault charge by Bath Township. And that was subsequently adjudicated and dismissed by a Clinton County District Court judge. So my motion is this, that I be reimbursed for the $20,102.10 for my personal money to defend myself against a charge that never took place. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Yes.
It was my understanding that Bath Township wasn't a party to the case.
You want to say that again?
It was my understanding that Bath Township wasn't a party to the case.
Why was the attorney's in?
Because you're saying that they weren't a party to the case because she filed with Michigan State Police, which that exempts you from anything that happened between August? Careful, Ryan. Be careful what you say. From August of 2022 until July 25th of '23?
No, that's not what I said. I said it's my understanding Bath Township wasn't a party to the case.
Did our taxpayers pay for the lawyers?
No.
We didn't.
No. We weren't a party to the case.
I mean, I'm just asking. I don't know. I didn't know the answer to that question.
Well, previously you said we spent $50,000, which I'm not sure where that came from either.
The $50,000?
Yes.
From what I received from FOIA requests on attorney fees?
Karen, did we spend $50,000 on Marie's case?
I believe the, I believe the invoices provided during that time were for multiple things, not just.
No. No, they specifically stated in the beginning. And I only went till March of this year. So I have no clue what. So I have no clue what it went. Now, maybe.
Okay. Because we pay bills for planning, we pay bills for zoning, we pay bills.
Could we ask the attorney her interpretation of that?
The interpretation of whether or not you were a party to the.
Not me, us, as a township.
No, whether the township was, even though that was an employee of the township, and you're not a party to that. Okay. You're up. Sorry about that, Elsie.
We also have to take Cindy's recommendation to sit at the table if that's.
Oh, did I hear a word you said?
I beg your pardon. I apologize for that. I was trying to be collegial while we walked. If the board would wish for me to sit at the table so as to avoid this, I would be happy to do that, mentioning resident Kronk's comments earlier. In addition, I understand the question to be whether Bath Township was a party to the criminal complaint. Is that the request? That is not my understanding, that Ms. Dunham filed that criminal complaint of her own accord, that the Michigan State Police pursued that investigation on their own and recommended those charges to the prosecutor on their own. The prosecutor then decided to issue those charges. I am not aware that Bath Township Board or in any capacity took a position on that case.
Okay. So the emails that went back and forth between the defendant or the complaint, not me, not me by any stretch, from the defendant to our board of trustees, doesn't make them accountable?
I'm not sure I understand. You mean the fact that she notified the board of her complaint?
Numerous times, yes.
I am not aware. It would take board action to engage in legal action, and to, more to the point, the board does not, is not a person for whom there could be, at that point, a criminal assault against. So it has to be an individual who would be the subject of an assault and battery charge.
So if I'm understanding what you're saying, your opinion, and it is just an opinion, is that the board was not responsible, there was no connection, they were not involved at all, so therefore, the $20,000 that I spent is on my own, and they're not responsible for it to pay?
The question before me was whether Bath Township was a party to that case.
Right.
I answered that question in the negative. And what you take from that, I will leave to you, Madam Supervisor.
No, I appreciate that.
You don't have an opinion on whether it's a bad, a legal thing?
Are you saying that's the legal opinion? I think is what the question is being asked.
I would like.
So your legal opinion is that Bath was not a party to this criminal offense?
It is absolutely, that is absolutely my opinion. And again, the board can do with that what it wishes. Whether the board chooses to approve your motion is up to the board. But I am saying that it is my understanding, my opinion, having been involved in the matter at the early stages to understand what was transpiring, that there was no complaint by Bath Township, for instance, to give clarity in case there is confusion. If, for instance, Madam Superintendent had called the police and said, "I'm making a complaint because something has occurred here," she would have been acting on behalf of the township in her capacity as superintendent.
Okay.
I am not aware that that transpired.
So you're not aware that one of our trustees engaged in that through an email?
With the Michigan State Police?
No, with the rest of the board.
I am aware of the email that you're speaking about.
Okay.
I don't think that those are the same thing, Madam Supervisor.
Oh, I see. All right.
Because Mr. Fiewen Bliss, in this email that you are speaking about, which we would still contend is privileged despite the previous conversations, quite to the contrary, over the period of six months, that conversation was simply to provide information to the board. That information was provided to the board, representatives. I don't think Madam Treasurer would have received it. She was not a member at that time. And I do not think that you believed, you received it because you were the subject of the complaint at that time.
That's correct. I did not receive it. That's correct.
We share that understanding.
But the board did receive it.
Members of the board received it.
Yes. And in that, it does discuss what they should or shouldn't do, or that they should keep you apprised, the attorney. We should lean on you to make sure that, you know, we understand what's happening.
It has been a very long time since I read that letter. I will let the letter speak for itself, but again, would caution that that is supposed to be privileged communication.
Well, privileged communication or not, it was sent to me anonymously.
I don't quite think it was anonymously, Madam Supervisor, but okay.
It was. It said anonymous. Would you like to read it?
No, ma'am. I do not wish to get into that mud with you.
So I guess my point being.
Do you look for us or would you just be a study?
My point being with this is that the fact the board did know, they knew from the beginning, they could have stopped it, our human resources could have stopped it, anybody could have stopped it along that line, and that's not what happened. It continued to go and go and go until it finally got into the court system, and the court system made a decision. So when you say that when trustee Fiewen Bliss states that Bath Township trustees did not, or Bath Township itself, did not have a place in this incident, I would have to argue that, and what you're trying to say to me, I think, is I need to go back into court in order to prove that?
I, Madam Supervisor, and simply answered the question. I understand you disagree with me, and.
I do.
It wouldn't be the first time.
No, it would not be the first time, I'm sure. But I'm just saying that that's what I'm understanding, is in order to clarify, for lack of a better word, where our township supposedly stood and what they did, and this board is pure in its not knowing or saying anything, there was no involvement.
I am not aware of board action to take any part in that criminal investigation.
Oh, no, there was no action. No, I would agree. I don't think any of them voted, other than for the closed session.
In March.
To eliminate, in March, to eliminate me from the office. And that, again, I have never talked to them, they don't talk to me, so I have no communication as to what that was all about, of why I was eliminated from the office, because, again, it wasn't discussed, nor was it discussed with me in August. It came through an anonymous email, as to leaning on our attorneys to make sure that, you know, we do it right, because they don't want to leave an impression that they dislike me. So consequently, that was part of that communication that went. So everybody was very aware. Everybody was very aware. But advice, or whatever it was, that they were told, that they decided between themselves that no one was going to talk about it, that certainly was discussed and decided that no one would talk to me about it. And so that's no involvement.
Well, I, first, I don't know anything about what did or did not occur in discussions because I wasn't a party to them, so I can't speak to that. But second, I would just come back to, it was Ms. Dunham who filed the complaint. It was the Michigan State Police who investigated that complaint and recommended the charges. I am not aware of any involvement by Bath Township Board, or, to my knowledge, even any officials in that.
So if you become aware, if you become aware of what's going on, so in other words, if I send you my file, then you are aware of what happened?
I don't think awareness is the same as pursuing a criminal charge, Madam Supervisor.
Okay, so I'm understanding, then, from your standpoint, being a township attorney for the board of trustees, that, and Sheri, we're part of the board of trustees, and you're supposed to be representing all of us to protect us from legal action. That's, as I understand, what a municipal attorney does. Am I wrong on that?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So it doesn't necessarily say anything about protecting from one of their own, correct? So one of their own, me, that representation then becomes pretty cloudy of what your job is, or what my job is, or what their job is.
If that's a statement that you're making, I, okay, I'm not sure.
No, I'm asking you a yes or a no. Does that?
To whether it's cloudy?
Yes.
There are many times in representing municipal entities where one or more members of the board are not on the same page as other members of the board. I still represent the entire board.
Really? So if I'd have come to you, it wouldn't have cost me $20,000?
I would have to be approved to exercise on behalf of that. Plus, I don't practice criminal law, so I couldn't have done that for you anyway.
I know you don't. Okay. So again, what you're saying is, in order for me to collect the $20,000 for my expenses, I have to go into court?
Madam Supervisor, you have said that. I have not.
No, I'm asking you. You're the attorney, you're the legal.
But I don't represent you, and I represent this board. And you have asked me whether Bath Township was a party to the criminal process that.
I'm asking you if I need to go into court again to prove or to say whether or not the township was liable for my $20,000. So I have to go back into court and file in order to obtain that $20,000?
It would certainly always be any member of the board's prerogative, if that is what you thought was best for you.
Okay.
I can advise you on that. I represent this body. So if this body, for instance, were to today approve your request for legal fees, I doubt you would need to go anywhere. If they declined to do so, what you do with that action is up to you.
But they'd listen and lean on you as to what you say, and what you're saying is, they did not have any responsibility.
Madam Supervisor, I was asked the legal question of whether Bath Charter Township was a party to your criminal proceedings.
And you're saying no.
My answer to that is no.
Okay.
If this board chooses to make a policy decision, that they would like to take some level of responsibility for that, or give you reimbursement for whatever their individual reasons that equal an approval of your motion, that's a policy decision. I'm not a policymaker.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I ask a short question? Were the Bath Township taxpayers responsible for the legal fees to chase her down, take her to court? Was that Bath Township tax money that hired the lawyers to go after you?
Our office had zero involvement, if the question, Madam Kellerman.
No, that was the prosecutor.
Our office had zero involvement with the criminal proceedings. Literally zero.
So the taxpayers didn't have any cost to this fiasco?
No, I said that the township had, our office had nothing to do with the criminal proceedings. If we were contacted to request advice or notified of that, I'm going to have some level of service provided. But I was, I don't, still to this day, have no idea who, Trooper Andro, I think I read about. I don't know who that is. I don't, I can't help you with that. We were not involved in that.
Ready for a roll call vote? End of discussion?
I'm sorry. Ready to watch for our time.
The motion is to reimburse $20,102.10 to the supervisor for her personal legal expenses. Oh, I did. You want a copy of this? So I'll make a copy for you. Copy to Brenda. Yeah, go ahead.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fiewen Bliss?
No.
Mr. Rosecrans?
No.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, no? Ms. How?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
No.
Mr. Benzie?
No.
Okay, that's a five to two roll call. Okay. You all heard it. Okay, the remarks that, the next one says, which would be B, so you're in items for action, supervisor's remarks. I made a number of remarks last meeting. In fact, there were 19 of them. And the only thing that I'm asking at this point is that they be included in the minutes. Now, I can either read the whole thing, thank you, or I can give them to you to include them in the minutes. And I don't know that I need action to do that. I'm just requesting that those be included in the minutes. So I will get you, in fact, you can have this copy. This was received August 16 by Bath Township. So here we go. Yes.
So you want them in the minutes? And why are, and then you want us to accept them in the minutes? That's what you're asking?
I'm asking and expressing my personal opinion that those need to be in the minutes. Yes.
I just wondered if the version in the packet was different than the version you read last meeting, because there's some text, red text, and I wasn't sure if it was the same.
There is, yes, it is the same.
Okay.
All I did was take out the summary, whoops, I'm sorry. I took out the summary and just included the 19 points. And I'm asking that they, there you go. Okay. All right. So now we are on to.
May I ask another question?
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Nope.
How does that work, Clerk Chalender?
Are they an attachment?
Because you've already approved the minutes, so I don't.
Yes. We haven't approved them.
Oh, you haven't approved them?
The next.
Because we're going back to check.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And at that point, depending on what they want to do. All right, we are at items for action D, which is the senior center.
Did we take action?
Yes.
Did I skip one? Oh, the synopsis. Yes, thank you. I did skip that. We're on C. Supervisor, approval of board meeting synopsis publications reconsider motion of August 7, 2027. That is a thick packet. Apparently, if I'm understanding, from, not from the clerk, but from our superintendent, that there was a bit of confusion that went with this, that she didn't understand because I had brought in what I gave to her in the Open Meetings Act for minutes, and the Charter Act of 1947 also spoke to the minutes. I understood all of that, and that wasn't what I was talking about with the synopsis. I gave a copy, I think, to everybody that was here. One of the things that I'm looking for, because not only has the governor decided that we need more transparency, or that we at least give the illusion that we're doing transparency, it was something that I felt was very important. Brenda and I have talked back and forth for a long time with regards to the synopsis. What I'm trying to say with this is, the synopsis is part of your minutes, and they are. When a synopsis is published, that actually is coming from your minutes. So I understand the Open Meetings Act and the minutes, and I understand all the other. What I'm requesting is that it be a little clearer with our minutes. For example, I think I gave you an example, where I put down, can I see yours for a minute? What I put down on it was roll call votes as opposed to approved. So I'm asking for roll call votes, like seven to zip, okay? Or, for example, you have a roll call vote, five to two, that would approve your second reading. That meant that two of our, obviously, trustees didn't agree with home businesses and how it was presented, what they were doing. That's part of what I'm asking for with the synopsis. It has been kind of brought up repeatedly, and I'm not really sure why publicly this is brought up, because Brenda and I have talked about it numerous times, about it, and I've written letters on it, and et cetera. And there's also a transparency liaison, which, of course, we could have. We're spending a lot of money right now for our attorneys to attend, and lots of other staff that are attending. But one of the issues that the governor brings up is advocate for transparency and procedures that encourage public participation in public meetings. I happen to agree with that 100% because I believe that the public should be involved. The synopsis, again, is published in your newspapers, in the Lansing State Journal, and it is a part of the minutes. People don't come up here, and I think you can attest to this, they don't come up and ask for minutes. No, I don't, that just isn't, it's online, you can get it, read it. But the newspaper has a synopsis that tells you what the board did. I'm looking for as much transparency as possible, and that was my main reason. So I'm off my soapbox. Go right ahead.
Thank you. My question was, is that in your first paragraph, you said that you felt that the board passed a motion that removes your statutory authority and responsibility pertaining to your approval of the synopsis. I don't understand how, what the board voted to include in their synopsis takes away your I don't understand how what the board voted to include in their synopsis takes away your authority.
No, if I don't approve of it, for example, and Brenda's had, yes, she and I have talked. You know, when it comes to approving, the supervisor is to approve the synopsis, okay? And that is a requirement that is done. She protect, he or she prepares the synopsis for the newspaper. Then I am supposed to, as the supervisor, agree or disagree with what it is. There are times when I agree with it, it's much better than what it was, but it's still not anywhere near what it should be. Roll call votes are what are in our minutes. Roll call votes should be in our synopsis, and that's what I professed. And so, yeah, I understand what you're saying.
But how is it, how does it remove your authority? Because you can still say yes or no.
That's right. And what you're saying is that if I say no, you don't print it.
That's my understanding.
That's not my understanding.
Okay.
Okay, my understanding is if I don't approve it, there's got to be a reason why, and she and I have talked about it before.
But the content is also at the discretion of the board.
That I don't think so. The content is discretion of the clerk as to how she writes it. Now, if she writes it according to, go ahead. Nope, you're good. Go, go ahead.
I can usually write the same as what Kathy, the clerk of four years, has always wrote it. I contacted MTA, verified, and they basically said it is only the actions of the board publishing costs money, so you do want to limit them as much as possible.
Correct.
We have the video that everybody can watch. We have the minutes that's placed on the website. And if anybody wants them, I can mail them, email them every week. And then the synopsis is a shorter version of the minutes.
Correct. And--
Now, I--
You give roll calls. There are roll calls in your minutes. You do, you do. You put your roll calls, you put it down. All I'm asking is that you end up putting that, and there isn't any longer list. You have my copy. Is it longer? What I didn't put in was, of course, the numbers that dealt with what our vouchers were. No, that's not mine. Mine was the one where it said roll call. Okay. If you, if you look at this, show me yours. No, that's not. This is what it looks like. I'm just showing so that you can see it. You have copies of it. So that you know this is not any longer, any shorter than what's already being published. The only thing that I didn't put in this example for her was the vouchers. She does list those, and they usually take about, what, three lines? And so I had my comment down here, which I said, just a few thoughts. This is what I've always said. I did not check the video for roll calls because I assumed she already has them. And then I put down, thank you for all your work. Now, if you take that out or even approved by, and even if you moved it down two or three lines, you'd still have a one-pager. They shrink this when you put a synopsis in.
I'm aware.
Yeah. And so all I'm saying is this doesn't change anything.
But you've approved them in the past without the roll call?
I have talked with her many times.
Okay.
Different. Yeah. And now it's like, you know what, I'm a little tired of talking. So I made an example of what it would look like. Yes.
Madam Supervisor, you've never explained it like this to me.
That's probably true. That's probably true.
Okay.
Now I am.
Okay, thank you. It's up to the board to decide what they would like to do, if they want to include this.
No, not include it. Change it so that--
Change it?
Yeah, okay.
Or a lot of other townships are even making it shorter, which I explained last time, and just making a small blurb in the paper stating that they can go to the website and find this information. We've talked about that before also.
So if you think that's what you want to do for your citizens, you go right ahead. I think that's entirely up to this board. Okay? So the motion being, and it would be my motion. Okay, because that's what it says here, the synopsis publication. And that is to reconsider their motion. Is there any other, oh, I'm sorry. That's the motion is, go ahead. Nope.
Okay. To reconsider the motion.
August 2nd, 7th of 2023. To add the roll call votes. Instead of replacing it.
How do I say that?
Replace.
Replace approved with a roll call. So that you had the roll call votes. Oh, I didn't. Replacing approved. Okay. Which doesn't add anything more or less to what you already do. Except it is clear.
I understand.
Okay, got it. Do I need to read it again? I'll read her. Need a second? A second. Discussion? Yes, trustee.
Thank you. Brenda, is that, is that fit with what you want to do?
I don't have a problem doing it. I do not believe anybody else is doing it that way. Remember, you've never explained it to me that way, so we didn't have good communication. Okay, I don't have a problem adding that in there.
Okay, thanks.
Nope.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chalender, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes. Now we can do the senior center proposal. Oh, okay. What this, oh, I'm sorry. Apparently, this is done by superintendent.
Thank you. I'm asking the board to assist in implementation of the five days a week because there are rentals in the building on Tuesday and Thursday. I've provided three options on the second page of the memo indicating that the board can cancel the rentals completely, allowing the center to be open from the proposed 9:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. on Tuesday and Thursday. Continue to allow the rentals, allowing the center to only be open for a shorter period of time on Tuesdays and Thursdays, or some other proposal that might, the board might choose.
Having talked to all the folks there, they really want it open. Most of the people, there's a couple of issues. One is the, they talked about the illegal gambling that--
Mm-hmm.
That's a problem because it really seems to be not okay.
So for me, that was interesting to hear the information from Nancy, and I appreciated hearing that.
Yeah.
The problem, part of the problem was, is that those programs, because they're private rentals, are allowed to pick and choose who can come and who cannot come. Whereas when we're open, everybody and anybody can play.
Right. So I talked to a lot of them, and I didn't hear one squeak from anybody saying, we can put a little ribbon down the middle of the room. This part's open for the ones that want to play euchre or whatever, and the other half can be open to the folks that want to get together and just yak. And they would like that. It's, seems a very positive thing, and I heard no arguments. Do you agree, Judy? Is that pretty much what we've, pretty much total easygoing, they're, just want to be together?
Okay.
And I think there's no--
So are you proposing that they would still be allowed to pick and choose who played and who didn't?
No. Not really.
Because the problem, the problem really is that when there is play for money, there are many complaints about play for money.
By?
Patrons. Allegations of, allegations of cheating.
Does that violate our own policy?
We don't play fast enough. I mean, there's a plethora of issues that have been eliminated since we went to this format.
No, I'm, if I'm picking up what this is saying, and I'm not so sure, does that violate our own policy about no gambling?
It does violate the policy of no gambling.
If it violates our own policy, then we got a serious issue.
Got a question. Well, that's partly why they cut that out of the senior activities because it is now rented privately. They can do with what they want during their own private parties, I understood.
But it's on our-- But it's on our--
It violates our law.
I don't care if it is private.
I don't believe about--
Is it on our rental policy that way?
Yeah, no gambling.
It's, no, our policy says no gambling. This says, and that's right, private individual for playing euchre, you know, private individual. Okay, I understand that, but it's still on our property.
If I understood Nancy right when she explained this, they don't consider a euchre tournament gambling by the gambling commission in the state of Michigan.
That's correct.
Texas Hold'em.
Texas Hold'em is.
If I understand this, euchre is not considered gambling as this tournament.
No, euchre is not considered gambling per the Michigan legislature. It says it's not illegal to play for money if the host of the game makes no money. Only the players can receive money.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to make sure I understood you correctly. Thank you.
But the Texas Hold'em.
But is Texas Hold'em included, Nancy?
That's--
Texas Hold'em is gambling.
Okay.
All right, let me see. I've got some notes here somewhere on-- Another one, let's see. There are three points right here.
Take care, Jeremy.
Gambling consists of three elements. One is a cost to enter. Two, the winner is selected by random and not a result of skill. By random, no skill. Three, the winner receives a prize, which can be anything of value. So per the--
Gaming commission?
Yeah, whatever. Yes, the gaming commission.
I get it.
Charitable Gaming Commission. Euchr is a skill. It's not gambling. It's not a chance game. It's a skill game. Much the same as golf is a skill. It's all a tournament, and they're not illegal. And I do have a phone number for these people if you would like it. The Charitable Gaming Commission. Can I put that right here? Charitable Gaming, 517-335-5780. And you can also, if you choose, contact the Attorney General. That's what I was told.
335-- No, I got that. 578, I have 3780.
If I'm playing euchre, I do not mind. I am there to share. I want to build the senior center, not take it down.
No, 578.
So I would like to see more games.
Can you give us that phone number again, Nancy?
One more time, Nancy, I'm sorry. Eight zero. That's what I need. Thank you.
You're welcome. So yes, let's do some more bridge tournaments, some more cribbage tournaments. Anything that, you know, some of that doesn't have to be played for money, but if they choose to, minimal, of course. Yes.
Are you the one that has, it's the private individual who pays for that?
Yes.
So, okay, so if I'm understanding, that Thursday, you don't need to have a contract anymore to do that?
That's my understanding.
Okay, that's-- And you do not need to pay anymore?
Yes, they could. If you want to come and play euchre, we'd love to have you. It's a fun thing. It's a good thing. What's that?
Okay.
There are some people that don't prefer playing for money, and I understand that. But they don't have to. They don't have to come in that same timeframe. The center's going to be open all day. So.
Yes. If it really becomes a problem, the folks who want to play for money can hopefully at heart play. If you don't want to play for money, it's the, or vice versa, or vice versa, that there is a way to separate it.
Right.
If that becomes--
Okay.
Um, they need to--
Thank you.
Well, I have a question.
You're better than I am. Yes, I do recognize you.
I'm just waiting. Okay, I actually made a phone call today to the lady that does the private individual one on Tuesday.
Okay.
I was told that nobody at the senior center talked to her about it being opened. Is that true?
I'm not sure what you're saying.
Well, the lady that rents it on Tuesdays for her Texas Hold'em. She said nobody actually had a conversation with her from the senior center in regards to you wanting to be open all day and her not being able to have her Texas Hold'em tournaments.
So no one's contacted her as to whether or not she would like to do the same thing that I'm--
Right, because she does not want, she wants to be able to still hold her cards there at the same time. So she's willing to compromise and not have the center open until four.
She's gambling.
So.
Yeah, she's, she's doing Texas Hold'em.
Well, I would just, you know, I talked to her, that's all I'm just saying. She, you know.
So the contract with her is null and void.
So based on the information that we're hearing tonight from the Charitable Gaming Commission, then she would not, no longer be able to play that.
Texas, Texas Hold'em.
Texas Hold'em.
She could play euchre still.
I understand that.
Correct.
Okay.
I'm just referring to the other program. No, according to what you're saying, she's not allowed to--
She's not allowed to do Texas Hold'em at all from what you're saying.
Honestly, I made a mistake, and I didn't have all the details of the rental agreement in my head, so.
All right. Let it go. We know. Okay, so now where does that leave us with the senior center opening?
Sounds like number one.
So it sounds like, number one, you're canceling the rental completely, allowing the center to be open as a proposed nine to four on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
I would like to make that motion. It's not called the euchre center. It's called senior center. Let's open it to our seniors. I'd like to make a motion. We accept number one.
That would be this one.
And be--
Yeah, there we go. You got it.
Texas Hold'em in that building?
No. Not at all.
Not even say that because I could--
No, Texas Hold'em. All right, is, what's, you made the motion?
Yep.
Sir, is this, I'll second it.
Cheryl asked if Texas Hold'em could continue to play, and I said no.
Because it's illegal.
Based on the, based on the information from Charitable Gaming, it's gambling.
Okay.
So no, it wouldn't be able to continue.
Okay.
And basically, we're choosing--
Number, number one.
Her motion, she's choosing to cancel the rentals.
Yep.
So, okay.
And open.
Is that, all right, my second, so is there any discussion? Don't understand.
I could just use one more re-reading?
I'm not providing food.
To cancel the rentals completely, allowing the center to be open as proposed from 9:00 a.m. until four.
On Tuesdays and Thursdays.
On Tuesdays and Thursdays. That's basically the number one I'm hearing.
That information that we got in the packet.
So we would do that before confirming what we've been shared with, with the state?
Nancy gave you the number to call. Is there--
Wait a minute, I do have another little concern here. This is nine to four, five days a week. Sorry, that was my mistake.
No, that's what, she's got it. That's what the clerk has. She just took the language.
No, it said Tuesdays and Thursdays in this number one.
So that--
I, that's not my motion, sorry. I take back my motion. Not what I want. Five days a week.
She's got it.
Okay.
Thank you. No, she got it.
Sorry.
Good catch. Now, what you're asking, Ryan, is that we're making a judgment on this issue without confirming with the gaming?
Not a judgment, but a decision.
No.
I mean, I believe what people are saying here, but it might be helpful for our staff to give the details for us.
The government entity.
Okay, is that part of? If that's, if that's the thought, oh, I'm sorry.
I think we should wait and let Karen call him.
I think we should wait and let Karen call him and get the paperwork that says exactly what.
All right, my understanding is this was supposed to take place September one. Is that correct? So we have, if you're going to give the authority for staff to do that, to check on it, to make sure that the gaming, charitable gaming is what Nancy was told, then it should be done definitely before September one.
Yeah.
Right? Okay. Does that sound reasonable? Karen, does that sound reasonable?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear. I was reading.
What we're talking about is that. Hang on. What, what we're talking about is that you would have the authority, this is what these two are saying, you have the authority to call the charitable gaming.
Okay.
To confirm what they say.
Okay.
And what I'm adding to that is that it be done before September one because that's when they're supposed to be opening. So my question to you is, is that timeframe too tight?
I can reach out to them tomorrow and hopefully hear back from them and then whatever decision can be effectuated. Correct.
Okay. Is that satisfactory? Okay, so in order for you to find out that information, are you looking for the next meeting? October fifth or September fifth? I don't want to move along any faster than it is.
I mean, that's the week it would open.
Right, that's our next meeting is September fifth.
No, but that's also the week it would open, five, well, that week it would open four days a week.
So that's, that's the question, apparently.
I was, I was going to make a suggestion to help this process.
Okay.
I understand there's a motion and a second on the table, and the only question is whether we can confirm the information received.
Correct.
Unfortunately, that is not a specialty I can speak to standing here today, but you can amend the motion to say that it is conditioned on confirmation about, about charitable. You know, something along those lines, so it's contingent and can take action as soon as she receives it.
Oh, the one to take action then would be the superintendent, not us. Okay.
I believe trustee Kellerman's motion was option one with the edit of it being open five days a week. I don't know if it was captured in the minutes, but.
Whatever it says here.
And it was seconded by supervisor Howe. I think the question here is pertaining to confirmation. We, we could simply amend the motion to say upon confirmation of information from the charitable gaming commission. Because the, the board, the board meeting will show what this discussion was about, that we have the video, and I think perhaps Madam Clerk can even include that in the minutes. So I think that would be clear enough for your board.
So amend the motion to, with, when it's completed, that you get confirmation of the gambling.
Before September one.
Before September one.
Yeah.
I think that feels like a reasonable compromise. Then we're not making decisions about canceling someone's rental if communication may have gotten misunderstood.
Inform them why it has to be this way.
Well, that would be, yes, that would be asking the state to send some verification. So that can be sent on to those who are contracting.
Yeah.
That makes total sense that we're not just being, kicking them out because.
Right. I want, I just want to be clear. So effectuation of that change would take place on the fifth, which is a Tuesday, September.
No, it would take place on the first.
So it's already open on the first from nine to four, for bingo. So I understand that. What I'm saying is, is the first Tuesday that it would be open from nine to four would be on the fifth.
So instead of September one, nine to four, five days a week.
It already is.
It would be September fifth.
Good. Cause that's your first Tuesday, Thursday of that following week.
Okay, and that's with the charitable game confirmation, because you're going to, I'm, I'm assuming you're going to ask before the first for something in writing, because like I say, you can call them tomorrow and they can email it. Okay. Now, you want to try that one? Now, do we, does everybody understand? Let's try it again. From what the attorney had said, your motion would go into effect with confirmation. Is that correct? Okay.
September, September one with confirmation of the.
But she's saying September fifth now.
Well, because it's.
How it followed the week where it all set.
Yeah.
The days of the week, it doesn't make any difference.
No, it doesn't, because she's going to end up, we're giving her the authority to be able to say and to send to the contractual people by September one that this is what's going to happen.
Okay, on September.
Is the motion September one or September five?
That's a good question.
It's, it's September one, but because of the days of the week, it doesn't matter.
So I'm going to use September one.
One.
It's okay.
Okay, yes, okay.
It's a Friday.
Yeah.
Thank you. That will work. That will work.
Okay.
Does that?
I do have a question.
No, you're not allowed to have que, no.
Does our insurance, who's going to man the hours?
Staff.
Staff is going to mend them all, and our insurance, we won't have to worry about that. Okay. That was our question last meeting.
Okay. Are we all clear?
Yes.
On that motion?
Clear as a bell.
Clear as mud.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler, yes, Ms. Howell?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Finsbys?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't think there was anything else. Oh. Now we're on items for action. E, township staffing.
Thank you. This was brought to you last meeting. I have recommended approving the following positions for the clerk's office, the assessing office, and the police department effective immediately. The fiscal impact this year would be in the clerk's office approximately because I, I plan for a full package of benefits and that isn't always taken advantage of for four months, which be, would be September, October, November, December, which I don't think we would hire that quickly, would be twenty six thousand. In the assessor's office, the same thing for four months. I do not think it would be a full four months, would be twenty thousand. And the police impact this fiscal year, based on the current benefits they receive and the starting wage of a new officer would be approximately twenty eight five.
I would like to make a motion with this one, if possible. I would like to see these separated. For items. In other words, you're asking for assistant to the clerk, assistant position for the assessor, and the police officer. I would like to have these separated for three different, three different issues.
I agree with that.
So that's the second discussion.
I'm sorry, what was the motion?
The motion would be to separate.
Each one of these items.
Each one of these items, so that you have one, you'll have one vote, two votes, three votes.
We could do that without a motion, right?
Well.
Individually.
You could, but I'm making a motion that we do it to make sure that that's going to be followed. And it's been seconded, so is there any other discussion? Okay.
Reread the motion, please.
Will you read the motion again? To separate these hires, these individual hires that we're looking at. So you will vote on the assistant clerk, one vote. You will vote on the assistant assessor, second vote. You will vote on the police officer, third vote. So you're going to be voting three times instead of one. Does that help?
Yeah.
And it's been seconded, so.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Finsbys?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler, challenge, yes, Ms. Howell?
Yes. All right, I'll make a motion to, we'll vote for the assistant to the clerk. So these requirements are being expanded, and we're looking at a full-time employee for four months in 2023 at twenty six thousand dollars.
I'll second that. I also have a question, if I may.
I do too. Four months, was it in here? I'm not seeing it.
Hang on to your question.
Oh, there's four months left in there.
It would be to hire, if I may, to hire immediately, but they would be included in next year's budget. I was letting you know the fiscal impact it would have if it became effective immediately. It's a permanent position.
That's what I didn't understand. Okay, so permanent, full-time.
Assistant to the clerk, not a deputy, but an assistant. So it's an assistant, assistant to the deputy? No assistant to you. Oh, discussion, I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead.
Can you annualize that total for us, for all of these, if you don't mind?
What do you mean? I'm sorry, I'm.
Based on a hiring rate of approximately, what I'm going to give you is high range. Would be forty to fifty for the clerk's, assistant to the clerk, plus thirty thousand dollars for benefits. The assessing assistant is dependent on the level. There are three different levels. There's a technician. And then there's a deputy, and there's an assistant. So there's three different levels for those as well. I don't anticipate we would receive the high end of that because somebody would have to undergo significant training. So very similar to the assistant to the clerk. Same forty to fifty, and that's in the middle with thirty thousand dollars of benefits. That's always assuming a family package of benefits.
I don't mean to be a pain, but what were the numbers you used to get the twenty six?
For months.
The rest of the year, right?
It was just that total divided by four, divided by twelve times four.
Which total, though?
The high end, so eighty thousand divided by twelve.
That includes.
It's salary and full benefits.
Eighty thousand is the number.
Correct.
That includes salary and benefits, okay.
Correct.
Thank you. And then could you do the other two for me like that, too? I just want to make sure we're comparing the same numbers.
You should have the same numbers for the assessing position, right?
Because it's, yes, the middle.
So that would be the.
Would be eighty, and then the police officer is different because they work a different rate.
And there's, what did you have them down for?
Twenty eight five.
Twenty eight five for, for four months? Yep.
Eighty five five total, and that's for somebody that's starting.
Yeah, I should have been a cop.
Starting at the, at the base level of our pay scale. As a new officer.
May I?
No, go ahead.
So just to make sure I've got this right, you're asking for these three positions. It would total seventy four thousand five hundred in fiscal year twenty three's budget, and you'd be adding the two hundred forty five thousand five hundred to fiscal year twenty four's budget as permanent positions?
Correct.
Okay. And the assistant to the clerk is not an assistant to an assistant?
No, it's not. It's an assistant to the clerk.
Got it. Thank you.
How does that fit in? What I'm asking the clerk is how does that fit in, if we're in discussion point? How does an assistant to you fit in to what you're doing?
Well, you look development job responsibilities.
Yeah, I know the clerk, well.
And they have even more. There's so many more FOAs. There is, you know, so much next year with the, the elections. We still have to keep up, and elections is all extra. We still have to keep up with.
Okay, my question for you, because I, I know all this, and I've listened to them talk, different clerks. And what I'm hearing is a whole lot different than what we have. What do you think they do? The ones that aren't chartered township clerks, they're common law clerks. What do the townships do that don't have the funds? To add an assistant. In fact, some of them don't even have deputies. Some most do, but you don't, okay, I'm just, I just ask what they do.
I think the answer is, if I may, is they're sending them to other townships to vote for those nine days prior.
Not, well, some of them are, yes.
I mean, that's what we're doing in this county.
Yes, we are, and we still, they still do the paperwork, so I'm not real sure. And I'm, I'm only, no, I'm only asking because I've talked to clerks that are common law clerks, and it's really, really tough on them. It isn't any different than, I'll bring it up now instead of later, administration fees that we do for our taxes. The purpose for those was to help townships that were struggling doing their taxes. We don't struggle. No, we don't struggle. Any more than what I guess, I, I, I'm trying to figure in my head. When I look at them and when I talk to them about what common law clerks do, and now we're going to add an assistant to you plus the deputy, plus two other people that are in the office who helped with the cemetery when you needed it. So I'm not real sure this is a good use of taxpayer dollars.
We're trying to pull the clerk's duties, positions.
Right.
Into the clerk's office instead of being scared around the township. Taylor does some stuff, she'll pull some stuff, she'll be able to do more of what is required of her. The deputy treasurer helps the clerk's office out. Samantha helps the clerk's office out.
Exactly.
She's actually under.
And they're all full-time employees. Okay, okay, no.
Plenty of stuff to do.
And so that's exactly right. So with the common law clerks that have to do that. I'm talking smaller, any common law, they, do you know the difference between the charter and the common? Okay, and knowing the difference between the two, we can, we do taxes. That's what we do. That's what a charter does. Common has to go to Clinton County to look for their budget. So they have to work within a real constraint of what they do. So when it comes to this new law, it's been a real struggle for them, a terrible struggle for them. We have like twice the staff of some of them, so I'm not understanding. I'm not understanding, I told you I would do this, I'm not understanding exactly what's happening.
We are so much bigger than they are and have.
You think? Okay, no. They, they're, they're a small, only smaller staff-wise. They're not necessarily geographically smaller. Okay. No, I'm, I'm just asking. So we're dividing this up. We're going to take three votes to figure this out. So we have a motion, a second, and a second, so now we need a vote. Is that, okay. Did you, well, I should say, did you get your answers to what you're looking for?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, trustee, good.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Finsbys?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler, challenge, yes, Ms. Howell?
No.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. You okay?
Yeah. Just sitting there a long time.
Yes, we have. All right, now our second vote is assessing the position for the technician for our assessor. Again, we're looking to add an assistant to our assessor for the next two-plus years.
Correct.
Okay. There's questions on both sides.
Sure, yeah, sorry. Cindy brought up, I believe it was Cindy, that we're paying the Bennys and the, and she's working for other townships also, and they're not paying benefits and retirement, et cetera. I, I don't understand this at all.
So our assessor is working for us forty hours a week. She has between, and I don't know the exact number, between four and five thousand parcels in this township, meaning individual parcels of land that she's responsible for assessing. She has had an agreement with me and with two previous superintendents to work with other general law townships such as Victor Township who have far less than that.
So why do we have three other?
Why do we have three? What, I'm sorry?
Wish I could. Hang on a second, maybe I will. Then if that's the case, and she has four to five, because we're doing this, we're discussing this before we even do the motion. My question with that is that if she has four to five, how does she end up with three other townships?
Four to five what?
You said four to five thousand?
Yes.
Parcels.
Yes, so she can do that on her own free time.
So I know exactly what you're saying. But I always, I always went to the major one, which is us, and that's what it should be. But I still don't understand the three, when we're paying benefits, why don't we contract? Anyway, so the motion, oh.
I got a question. I didn't think there was a motion yet.
I know, usually we have a discussion after a motion.
Um, when I was hired in a couple of years ago, I thought that she already had an assistant assessor.
She does, but it's part-time.
Okay, okay.
Who is it?
The position hasn't been filled.
No, you said who is, who has she had as a part-time?
No, yeah. When I hired in, there was a part-time.
There have been, but she...
No, who is?
But we don't have one.
We don't have one now.
We don't have one now.
Oh, so we're looking for a full-time instead of...
Because unfortunately, what happens is we provide the training, and they move on to other townships, or they've moved on to BSNA and...
Yeah, I know, that's understandable. I don't understand the two years, but I...
So basically, our assessor's been without an assistant?
Correct.
Okay.
For how long?
For the last two or three years. I mean, when did he leave? He left after I was hired.
No, we've had one since then. It's probably been about a year.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
When I was at the planning commission meeting, not last week, but the week before, Miles was talking about staffing of his department because some of his folks are, as you know, leaving.
They've taken other jobs.
And he indicated, which I didn't realize before, was that Beth and her team were doing a lot of planning activities, too.
So she oversees...
So beyond assessing.
The area, yeah. So she oversees the planning department. She oversees the building and zoning department. She's like the team lead of that group.
So it's a little beyond...
Correct.
Just the assessing.
But the impetus at this point for me is that she's set to retire in a couple of years. And if we're not prepared, I don't, I just don't know how we'll continue to function.
Is your plan for that person to continue to do those extra other activities?
Correct.
Not this person, but the new Beth?
Yes.
Okay.
How do we keep her?
She's retiring. She's going to retire.
I mean, the next one.
No.
The new one, the trainee.
She'll have a three level by the time she's done.
Because generally, if you can't keep them full-time, that's what they leave you for, is full-time employment.
Oh, no, please.
Could we get away with eliminating the part-time position and filling this full-time position, still upping her fifty percent support?
Correct.
Like, have you, I'm sure you've analyzed that.
We discussed that, because the temporary, it's called temporary salaries in her line item, that I would eliminate the temporary salaries and have a staff salaries versus that.
So that is what you're proposing?
Yes.
It's a full-time employment.
It's not a, it's not a, I don't, no, I don't anticipate having a part-time and a full-time. She has someone that does records management in the department, but that's very limited numbers of hours per week.
Okay.
And that's records retention.
Thank you for that clarification. That's really helpful.
So it's not, it's not a full-time on top of also a part-time.
So then the cost is less? No, no, but the net cost for debt...
Tell her, she can't talk.
After you do the offset of what you've got.
Would you like to dabble? Because, oh, God, I hit you. I'm sorry. My fault, my fault. Treasurer's telling me that we don't have an open meeting. I love it when she comes. She, she really is good. All right, so now do we have a, do we have a motion? Or you have another question?
Well, I'll put a motion for it if you're ready.
Yep, we're, I guess we're ready. Do you have any other questions?
I would move approval of the creation of the position of technician, assistant, or deputy, depending on the level that you hire, assessing position, while eliminating the half-time position already in the department at a rate of twenty thousand dollars. Is it twenty thousand or twenty-six thousand?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six thousand this year for a full up to eighty thousand dollars in future fiscal years.
A second.
Okay.
A second. A second.
Okay.
Ms. Kellerman?
No.
Mr. Fueles Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challenger, yes. Ms. How?
No.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
So that comes out, what, five-two? Okay. So that particular assistant position for the assessor is a five-two acceptance or approval, however you want to look at it. All right. The third one is the police officer. That's one, I'm assuming. Is that what you're stating is one is twenty-eight thousand five hundred this year?
Correct, one initial.
For twenty-twenty-three.
And permanently moving forward.
And another township employee. Okay. Is there any?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I move that we authorize the creation of a new police officer position at a cost of twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars up to this year, this fiscal year, and up to eighty-five thousand five hundred next fiscal year with my appreciation for our police department.
Second.
We need to repeat the motion? Got it? Okay.
Mr. Fueles Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challenger, yes. Ms. How?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Beth and I would agree with.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Okay. Do you believe, we're on page three. Fourteen, new business. This is an introduction and discussion.
Thank you. You do have in front of you the Bath Charter Township Twenty Twenty-four through Twenty Twenty-eight Capital Improvement Plan, which was scored most recently by the Planning Commission. There are some information that most of you have seen these year after year. I believe trustee Kellerman, this might be your first year seeing one, if you did not see last year's. Capital improvements are large projects that go before the Planning Commission to be scored and prioritized for the consideration of this board for funding. The timeline is provided for you on page eight. On page nine, there is a project timeline and costs associated with the improvements. Some of the things that you will see in here, although very small, so if anyone needs it larger on page ten, there are projects that include infrastructure such as sewer, road projects, other major projects such as the Park Lake, if there are larger projects there, which we fund year after year graciously because we believe it's needed. And then the, excuse me, the replacement of vehicles. What you have before you on page eleven are the projects that were presented to the Planning Commission for their consideration, and then along with the score that they were given. I was not in attendance at this meeting, so if you have any questions, I would hope that Mr. Cock, he left, but Mr. Fueles Bliss is also on that board. There are project summaries included in there as well.
The vice chair's here, too.
Oh.
I'm sorry, John.
Well, that's good. All right, do we have a motion? Because we'll have a discussion.
I'm not asking for motion or action at this time. This is just for your discussion.
For introduction, gotcha.
Next time it would be asked to be accepted.
Actually, I have a number. Do you have a question? Because if you do, I'll...
I wrote it about a week and a half ago.
I'm sure you did. It's, anybody else have a question? Because I do. Okay, let me start. Comprehensive improvement, a capital improvement plan, is being introduced to us, not by John, but by our superintendent. And I'm not real sure why that is, because I don't see the superintendent listed for our capital improvement plans. I see your board of trustees, and I see your planning commission, and I see the planning staff, but I don't see your name. So I'm questioning why the superintendent or staff is coming to us instead of Miles or instead of John, I'm glad you're here, you know, the vice chair.
Yeah, Miles had a conflict tonight, so I stepped forward to be able to take this on. So I felt that there would be resources in the room that would be able to assist with the conversations.
Okay, that's conflict, C-O-N-F-L-I-C-K. Okay. The staff completed your capital improvement plan, not the board, correct?
The Planning Commission.
The Planning Commission, that's, that's who that is, your committee, your advisory committee, completed this.
Statutory committee.
It is a statutory requirement, if they'd be there.
It's a statutory committee, is what I was saying, not an advisory committee.
But they advise us?
Sure, but it's not an advisory committee.
But that's, they still advise the board as to what they want. And, let's see, I wrote myself notes here because I kept reading this and I kept thinking, are there any board members besides yourself that have been contacted regarding this plan? Now, Joe, you said you read it a week and a half ago. How do you have access?
I had a, I had a joint meeting with the Parks, Recreation, and Farmers Market Board and the Planning Commission. And as part of that meeting, the Planning Commission met separately with us, and they approved this plan, so I had a copy of it at that meeting. That's how I was.
Okay. Okay, so there are no other board members that have access to this, except what we received our packet? Is that what I'm understanding?
My first.
Okay. Is that, but you're already there, so you already know. So two of us on the board already have pre-information regarding this. The rest of us have to read it through in order to understand it, correct? Okay, so that again, I'll come back to that assumption. I would like to put this on hold. I didn't say not vote for it. I said on hold until our next meeting.
It is on hold.
It is on hold.
And that's, no, I know it's an introduction, but we'll introduce it our next meeting for a vote. So what I'm saying is, I don't want to vote on this until, so it'll be actually the middle of September.
One more discussion session is being asked.
So I understand.
What is it that we can bring to the table for you to question or understand better?
Is this part of the strategic plan as well as the capital improvement?
No.
Okay, so this is separate. So our strategic plan is yet to come.
We chose as a board not to do that.
To not to do what? I missed what you're...
Strategic plan. The superintendent brought it to us. Several board members wanted to move it forward. There was not enough to move it forward. So I think what Karen is waiting for is for us to then tell her we've changed our mind and we want to do that, which I am in complete support of.
To do a strategic plan?
To do a strategic plan, which is part of what our job is anyway.
And this would be a part of that strategic?
No.
No.
This is a statutory requirement separate from that.
So the, the capital improvement plan is a separate plan?
Okay.
That, of course, how many years has it been? What should I say? I've been monitoring for a number of years, and there's probably only two capital improvement plans that have actually taken place. And one was because the grant was allowed, and that was the senior center. So I'm not real sure these dollar amounts that we have, I'm not real confident with the capital improvement plan. John, you're obviously the chair or the vice chair for this. How many of these plans have taken place?
Every year.
Any year. I don't care.
One each year.
One each year is what you're saying.
I'm thinking he's saying a one plan each year.
Not one project.
Has been completed. Not one project, one plan.
Or how many projects have been completed?
Yeah, right.
I don't have that. One.
That's what I...
I hear the senior center picks.
And that's part of, because I knew the senior center had been completed with a grant, and they were able to do it. So what you have here is... You have a piece of paper here that really doesn't mean as much as the piece of paper is written on, because that's not something we actually plan on. Now, it was very important that the key security, I don't know that that should be a capital improvement plan. That should be a security plan that we go ahead and take care of without adding it to this. So for me, I'm not enamored at this point for a capital improvement. So I may appreciate the introduction. Go ahead.
The process that is supposed to take part is that the Planning Commission puts this together, and in the past, we haven't approved it. We've just received it. And it's meant to be a tool for us, excuse me, in budgeting. So the fact that projects haven't been moved forward is actually the board's choice. We haven't budgeted for those projects. Last year, we did budget for two of those projects to move forward. So if we want to move one or all six of these forward...
What two did we plan on last year?
The Nature Trail.
Have they been completed?
Phase one.
They're not completed.
I'm just saying what our role has been.
No, I understand, I understand.
And the second piece was, what was the second piece?
Because I remembered.
Oh, to do a, the senior center survey was part of that. We added twenty thousand, I think, in the capital improvements budget for that.
For, yeah, and we're, now we're looking at different funds to do it. No, I understand that. I get what that's supposed to be. What I have a problem with is it actually implementation of what you spend hours working on, and not that that should be dismissed because that's what your planning commission does. We fall down on where these are at and the money to be allocated for it. So I do appreciate you bringing it at this point, but I don't want to see this myself personally for an item of action, because it isn't, for me, it's just not there at this stage.
So the item for action is acceptance, not...
That's correct. That is correct.
So you don't want to accept it?
I don't accept it, but that's, that's okay.
It will be brought back to you for acceptance.
Of course it will. I know that. I'm just expressing my own...
Yes.
Unless something changes between here and there of what this really is and what we're really going to do, then that's, go ahead.
I'm happy to take it back to the Planning Commission, but I would just ask for some very specific feedback so that I can come...
There's no reason to take it back. They already have done their, their charge. They did their charge.
So nobody, nobody else has done anything on this but the Planning Commission. So if you wanted it to be something different than the Planning Commission, there's no other step in between.
No, I just want action on. I understand what they've done. We just haven't done anything. Over the years, we've never done anything. So for me, that doesn't mean a whole heck of a lot.
We're required to have a capital improvement.
Yes, you are required to do it.
So if, if we all don't receive it, what is your plan?
No, hang on, hang on with that thought.
So if during the budget process, if when we got to the capital improvement part of the budget, would you like to have discussion at that time about this document and a project that we could pick up?
If the discussion is going to lead to an actual end that we're going to spend X amount of dollars, right now, the ARPA funds that everybody depends on is really dwindling rather quickly. So I'm not real sure, unless we put some skin in the game, I'm not real sure where that's at. Now, your question.
But would that address, would the board then have the opportunity to choose a project and carry it forward?
If they chose to do it and said, this is what we're going to do, and they stick to it, so that, you know, you've got that in cement that says this project's going to take place, then I'm for that. As long as there's a project, one project, that our money, taxpayer dollars, are going to go into and seriously what they feel themselves as to what's the most important thing to be done. The trails are something that's been out there for, what, fourteen years? Is that what I'm understanding?
But this was a particular segment of it that we approved last year.
No, I, I understand. Oh, yeah, I understand that completely. But what I'm saying is that I'm still looking at this. The Planning Commission puts a lot of time and a lot of effort into this. There's no question. I've watched them do it. There's no question what they have to do. But what I'm saying is that somewhere along the line, their work belongs in the file thirteen because it doesn't mean anything to us. It doesn't mean anything to this board. It doesn't mean It doesn't mean anything to any of us. And I'm sorry for that because they do work really hard on that and they always have. And I'm just sitting there in the peanut gallery, sorry, guys, in the gallery back there, and watch what they do. And I know that they put a lot of time and work into it. I've been watching them for years to do that. And the same thing happens year after year. Go ahead.
I'll say one more thing. I really appreciate your kind words about the Planning Commission. I will take that back to them.
You don't have to, John.
I think that the way to recognize that work isn't by rejecting the plan. I think accepting the work that we've done and then putting it into the budget would be the way to say, you appreciate that work being done.
I wish that were the case. I wish that were the case. I thank you for those comments. Nope. Is there any other discussion?
Yes.
No, it's not. Okay.
Okay, so you want, at the next meeting, you wanted to bring this back for discussion?
For discussion, again.
And possibly at the second meeting in September, maybe?
Well, that will be put on for items, because in that length of time, we should, I should learn a lot more.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. It says item for actions, none. That would be new business 14, superintendent's report.
Thank you. I would like to wish congratulations to both of the interns that were in our planning department. Joey Emery, who is, his family is a longtime family of this community. His grandparents have served on boards and commissions as well as owned a business just down the street from us. He is moving to the city of East Lansing to become a planner and we congratulate him. Our other intern, Heather, has moved to the city of Novi to become a planner. So I think that we had very talented young individuals that have moved on to some really great positions and I wish them luck. And now our search will be on for additional interns that can help service the planning department. Our police and fire are under some major changes and under some major challenges. We've had some significant calls in the recent weeks that, and I think it's no surprise, mental health plays into those calls and plays into the, to the health and happiness of our officers as well as our emergency responders. So we do have a new young officer that joined us. His name is Sam Selick. He started with us from, came from LCC and is currently in his training phase of his employment with us. So I'll just note that. Work continues on the Chandler Road Corridor. Sorry, that was a mouthful to say at the end of the evening. We're looking at working with, and I have discussed this with this board previously, working with the city of East Lansing as well as doing township and trying to make sure we have some connectivity in trails as well as improving bicycle and pedestrian safety in that area as well as improving the road and our sewer system as well. Staff participated in a meeting today with the state of Michigan. I'm glad that there's still people here, eighth generation, I think you continue to say. And we had some discussion today about James Cousins Park and the work that will be done in that park because of safe routes to school. There will be, need to be some archaeological samples taken in that park because of what has happened there. We have indicated to M.D.A. because that this is their process and not ours, that we all need to tread very carefully. That is sacred ground and that if anything is found, it may change the course of that project. So we will continue to keep the community informed of that. We have informed them of the sacredness. I don't think that we can stress that too greatly to them because them not being from our community, of course, they don't have the appreciation that people that have grown up here their entire lives and have been through that with their families have for that area. So I would send a shout out to Mark Trotter because I think he understands that about this community. And he's, and he put some strong words on the table today when he felt that the community wasn't being respected enough and that that property wasn't being respected enough. So I appreciate him as a partner in the Webster Road Corridor project as well as the safe routes to school project. I think he is a valuable asset.
It should be noted that, it should be noted that Mark came back.
He did.
He did.
He did. I was thrilled.
I mean, that's something that I think a lot of people don't realize. He left, but he came back.
So he started his career in Ingham County, came here, left here to go to Ingham County and is now back. He is a valuable member of the road commission team. I think he's a valuable member of our community and I think he understands our community and fights hard for our community, especially when it came to the project today. He was, he was not at all afraid to be in the corner for our township. So I much appreciate him and his efforts on our behalf. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Public comment statement two. And this will be, obviously, your three minutes. It'll start.
Marie, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Are you invited to the monthly SCUMA meetings as the previous supervisors have been included?
No.
Are you invited to the county road meeting like the previous supervisors have been invited to? Like when they meet monthly, when they meet?
They do meet monthly on Thursday. That's my choice.
Not the road commission, but these meetings that she's speaking of?
No.
No, you're not invited to any of that stuff like the previous supervisors? Okay. I'm not going to ask why at this point. Not looking to really engage in this, just want to make a statement about the capital improvement plan. There are projects being done because we have non-discretionary and then we have discretionary. So Marie's referring to the discretionary. And on here, I see that the trail in Park Lake is not even on here, nor is the senior center expansion. So before we go spending all of our money, we might want to take a look at the things that are not on here. I think the expansion, the architectural designs were delayed so long that they were not able to submit. And that needs to be taken into consideration before you shoot the wad of ARPA.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else?
Yes.
Whoa, hang on, Rick.
I would just like to...
I promise. Take it easy. I, you know, Fred's, yeah, I'll go slow. I would just like to continue on a little bit. Our senior bingo, which is allowed under charitable gambling Act 382, page six, section 432.105A. Recreational bingo conditions, no need to obtain a license. Cards are sold for 25 cents or less. All winnings or prizes in a single day do not exceed more than $100. That was just a little more about, it's not gambling. It's a senior bingo. It's a fun thing. So, and I'd like to see more fun things.
Thank you. Thank you.
Start from the left.
Not until you get up there.
I was frustrated from 2008 to 2012. That's when the Texas Hold'em started in the senior center. And at that time, and the laws could have changed, so bear me out for a moment. At that time, as long as the Texas Hold'em was in the tournament form and that there were prizes, no more than $100, it was legal and you didn't need a license to do it, but you did have to use approved chips. The bath days committee and the legion and the BFW all went in together and they bought approved chips by the state, approved chips and tables and everything else. And they allowed the township to use them. So anyway, you might want to triple check on that because it could have changed, but that's what it was at the time. As far as the capital improvement plan, I bet not one of you know why we are required to have a capital improvement plan. The reason that we're required is because we have a sewer board of appeals. And what that has to do with that, I can't tell you that answer. But statutorily, we're required to do that. We're also statutorily required to have a strategic plan and a comprehensive plan, which is a land use plan. I don't know how you can, how you can get from point A to point B if you don't have any idea where you're going. You don't have a strategic plan. I think that should be a primary mission. At least it wasn't all the other supervisors. I'm sorry, not supervisors, superintendents, that they would put out, lay out the groundwork on that strategic plan. And they would ask the board of trustees what they would like to see happening in the township. And without that, I mean, you guys are the leaders. You're the ones who are voted. Superintendent works for you. The last thing I want to say is when you're talking about duties of trustees, you should also do something about duties of employees. The employees need to respect the trustees, every, all seven of you. There shouldn't be an attitude that, oh, you want me to write this bigger? Screw you. I don't have to. I don't work for you.
Rick, you're 10 minutes.
That attitude's got to stop.
Thank you. Yeah, I can really, oh, hang on one second. It's after nine, so we need to take a vote as to whether we're going to continue or...
Well, we're public statements.
I know we are, but it's still after nine, so...
Finish, let's finish. Finish public comment if it started.
Because there's no action.
I understand because there is no, but there is no action.
I make a motion, we continue.
Yeah, just, thank you. Nope, just hang in there. So I'm just saying it's after nine. I understand it's public statements. I understand all that. But I want you to vote now at this point, where there's only two minutes after nine, whether you want to go past nine.
Why are we passing it?
I know we are.
So why are we voting to go past?
You want to keep going? You want to keep moving?
Let's keep moving.
Okay. Keep moving.
Move, go.
Thank you, Dana.
I could have been done by now.
How true that is.
Chandler Road. Are they done grading Drumhiller between Chandler and what, Webster?
Grading it?
Yeah.
Have they put the car down?
It's ongoing. Huh? It's ongoing. They did it. It's always ongoing. Because they just did it and their still same potholes are still there. Just wanted to let you guys know that. I hope you didn't pay for it.
So potholes on Chandler.
No, I...
Chandler to Webster, that's the only one I travel.
You mean Drumhiller?
Drumhiller.
That's, yeah.
Okay.
So I drive it daily.
Yes.
Unless it's raining. And I know that's silly. But I do let the road commission know when it's in need of assistance because of our emergency response vehicles taking that road. I try to keep in close contact on that issue.
Yeah, it's really not well done.
Yes.
No, thank you.
Can I, have they put chlorine down this week for you?
Yeah, they did. I drove it today.
Put what down?
They did put chlorine down Drumhiller. Okay. I was just wondering.
Was that oil or something?
Yeah. Dust control?
It's always wet down through there, so I don't know.
Yeah, it's a dust control.
So it hasn't been wet. Say, I know my road was just done, so I knew it was happening.
Is that it?
Make sure. It was given to me. Guy Elton, camera center road. I just, a few points are just random, just things popped out. Number one, as far as the cameras go, I think they should be everywhere, honestly. And if you're doing something that you don't want people to know, you probably shouldn't be doing it. Put that aside.
That's true.
Clinton County, the address was about, you know, the battery factory in Eagle. You all should know there's a lot more going on than just a battery factory. It's a lot bigger issue than that. Wasn't reported to you correctly or completely? Just need you to know that. Large, on Clinton County, a large portion of the federal funds that were given to us for infrastructure was spent on the brand-new building that they felt they needed more than we needed, better roads. I'm going to say that, too. All right. We do have a problem with transparency. You voted on vouchers today. I overheard, because I was here, that nobody knew what was in the vouchers, but you approved them. Well, you didn't know, we don't know, and I, you approved money going out, just saying. And now we're getting down to the court case. If the board had no power, if the board had no part in the case against Marie, then how did they discipline her? If the board took no part in it, how did they discipline her?
They haven't disciplined her.
Oh, they absolutely did. They kicked her out of the building. They took her key. They took her office. Yeah. So don't say they had no part in it. They did. And it's still not cracked. All right. Again, we all know this, the sound online is terrible. In person, and when you, when you listen to it later on YouTube, it's great. I don't know why the mics weren't great later, but maybe it's that area mic. It's really bad if you're trying to listen to it online. It's like, I can't hear anything. You're turning your stuff up. Okay. The printed minutes were brought up. They have not always been as bad as they are. An example, when you get to trustees' comments, I have often read trustees commented. That was the official printed minutes. I'm like, yeah, who said what about what? Question again, how many citizens don't have access or the time to go online and try to listen to several hours of a meeting to try to figure out what's important to them? So I think we need to look at printing and publishing of accurate minutes. We really do. There's no longer a paper. They used to be in the paper. We know that. But if we could work on that, it'd be great. Capital improvement plan, as Rick was saying, without a strategic plan, how do we know that it's in line with our vision? I can't tell you how many residents, and you've seen this, too, on Facebook are asking, oh, what's going on over there at Marsh and Saginaw? They really ought to know, but there's been nothing out there. They should know.
Three minutes.
And the last of all, I keep hearing y'all referred to as leaders. Guess what? Sorry. You're not supposed to be leaders, only by example, the way you live, act and treat yourself in public. You're supposed to be representatives.
That's exactly right.
Of the citizens and the township. Please don't forget that. Thank you.
Thank you, Guy.
Your turn. Oh, boy.
Although I'm somewhat reluctant to address this august body, I like it. I'd like to address the attorney's opinion. Township attorney has issued her opinion that the township has not been party to the criminal proceedings involving the supervisor. Township attorney has been involved in this criminal matter since being requested to do so by the superintendent and one trustee. The township has spent a minimum of $31,000. And trustee Bliss, if you were wondering where that is, you might want to check the invoices you've signed because I've read them. The attorney would have you believe that because Bath Township did not sign the criminal complaint against the supervisor, the township is not a party to the proceeding. The attorney's opinion, while novel, appears to be somewhat flawed, and this is a criminal matter, not a civil matter. In this criminal matter, the township provided video evidence in this matter that was initially requested by township personnel. Employees provided testimony in the criminal matter. Employees used township equipment, time to communicate with the board of trustees, each other, and MSP, and were paid to do so. The township attorney had been in contact with the district court regarding this matter. Attorneys have attended criminal proceedings in St. John's with this matter. Superintendent... Superintendent has been present at a number of criminal proceedings. Bath Township PD provided interview rooms for MSP to interview their witnesses. While I'm sorry to say, Ms. Mills, in my opinion, the bottom line is if you use township personnel, if you use township funding, and if you use township legal advice for the supervisor's criminal matter, the township is a party to this matter. Thank you.
I live out on Hunter Road in the middle of the woods. I'm retired from state government. I've dealt with more FOIA and other open meetings nonsense for 35 years than I ever want to see again. But I got to tell you, I've never been called at home from out of state in Arizona, California, and Oklahoma to ask me what in hell is going on in Bath Township. Never. And these are from all retired state employees who have been through it all. I promised them we weren't going to go back and do the Blue Duck thing again, waste another $50,000 of the township's money. But I look, and I agree that you cannot have a long-term capital plan and a long-term plan for the township without a strategic plan. And usually that's part of how you plan to grow Bath Township, preferably not with more student apartments, but that's just my personal opinion. And I got to say, the other thing, I've got to give the Bath Police a big amount of credit. They handle mental health calls better than any other department I have seen. And after working with prisoners with mental health problems for 25-plus years, they so, are so effective at de-escalating and not having things go straight to hell in a handbasket in two seconds, they need a big attaboy. And I hope as we hire the new ones, that we reach for those who are willing to get that training to learn about this group. Because we, it's more and more broad and it's more and more unexpected in some places. And without proper handling, it can just escalate in a nanosecond. And Bath Township is a nice place to live, and we all want to support you in any way we can. But, you know, the police department does a great job, the fire department does a good job, and I'm just hoping that we can help you get this back in line. I know COVID did nothing to help it. I know this other issue did nothing to help it, but we got to regroup and go marching forward if we can. And if somebody needs help, I retired with an MBA and a $2 billion budget. So budget things I'm good at. Not good at art, so don't get me into Blue Duck, please.
Good evening, Judy Gardi again. I appreciate, Marie, your interest in tabling the CIP. There's a lot of information in there to look at and to think about and to process. I was surprised when I saw the CIP this year that it didn't include the senior center expansion, which we've been turning in year after year. It didn't include a mention of the Nature Trail, which has been in the budget. It's come, it came out of the planning commission and went into the township budget two years ago. We worked with the planning commission and with the board to get it into this year's budget, so we could continue to work on the trail. It's been almost a year and we still haven't seen any work done on that trail. We're, we're still waiting for that. So I really appreciate your interest in tabling it for two weeks, so people do have a chance to read what is included in this year's recommendations to the board. I know that I stood up here in March and asked where the strategic plan was and why, how, not why, but how you, as a board, could move forward without a plan. That was in March. I believe I was the first one to stood up here and asked that. I'm still interested in your developing a strategic plan. We, as a community, would be interested in helping you with that. And I really seriously think that you must get that done before you start talking about a budget. I don't know how you can plan to spend money if you don't have a plan to spend the money on. So I would really encourage you to get that strategic plan done before the budget discussions. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
I'm Jim Church. I live on Clark Road. I may sound a little repetitive after what Bill had to say, but I just want to remind you that she voted six to one nearly a year ago to deprive Marie of her office in the name of safety.
Yeah.
And then we find out that the attorney billed an additional $31,000 on the basis of apparently preparation for representing the board's interests in Marie's trial. And then they have the nerve to come up here and say, you're not connected. Sounds like a conflict of interest to me. Credibility is on the line and they don't measure up. So maybe a future plan would be to replace them with somebody who can be a little more objective and not having a pigeon blot. Basically, whether you folks want to admit it or not, by the basis of all this, you're in this up to your eyeballs. You joined a conspiracy with disgruntled employees to act together to give Marie the shaft, one way or another. And deny it all you want. You're liable, and the day is coming, you're going to regret not reimbursing the legal fees. Thank you.
I will apologize for.
Eighth generation.
Eighth generation. I will apologize for my outbursts. Civil disobedience does have a price, and if the chief who stepped out wants to talk to me, you can always do that. But emotions get high and we like to address grievances to our government. So sometimes we're going to speak out. I noticed tonight Ms. How is the chair, wanted a motion to extend the meeting, and I saw eyes rolling, I heard sighing and huffing and puffing, and you've done this to yourselves. You really need to keep that, that emotion as limited as you can. Having, that's why I apologize for mine. But you did that to yourselves. You, you waved your finger at her and you, you shout the rules, you have your lawyer defend you to, to have rules, rules, rules. And again, you know, you try to make like she doesn't know what she's doing, so when she follows your rules and follows your policies that you've made, you scoff at her. That's why you're in the wrong. Disagree with her all you want. I do. I'm what, 90%? I'm true mate? But, you know, you should be working together. And maybe the attorney could answer what recourse the supervisor has to returning to her office. The board made a decision, they voted on it, it has not been completed, therefore there should not be any, we're not involved. It should be, hey, this is your recourse, Marie. Just walk in there and sit down and say, my office, because the board said you could. That's just me. I do kind of agree with the whole, the township wasn't a party, because that's legalese. They weren't involved in the criminal complaint. But because of all the back action, back channel action there, conspiracy as someone came up with, you're certainly going to be a party of the civil suit that should be coming. And it's a shame that this had to happen and continues to happen, but you guys made a ruling, and it's not being accomplished. So will there be disciplinary action for those involved from the board? Will the lawyer step up and say, you guys got to get it done? Who knows? And in closing, I'd like to say hello to our friends from out of state who are watching. I'm Kenny, eighth generation. Thank you.
All right, we're on item 17, board member comments. Did we start? Shoot, Ryan. Trustee Bliss.
I, big congratulations to all of the Bath Bees that returned to the classroom today. Hopefully that was pleasant and successful, and best luck on the new academic year. And on the capital improvement plan, while I agree with the audience members who say we need a strategic plan, I support that, I agree with that, there is a coding place in the capital improvement plan where there's extra points for projects that align with current township plans. So some of our projects got extra points for being aligned to the rec plan and other plans that we have. So I wouldn't say that the entire CIP should be tossed aside because of that. I think there is a tie there, but again, I'm on board with us doing a strategic plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
It has something to do with the senior center.
I want to thank the police and fire. They have such a hard job, and we don't always give them the credit that they deserve. And each time I see one of them, I thank them. Thank you.
I just want to thank everybody for coming to the meeting tonight and sharing all your input and thoughts.
Actually, I would agree with that. It's very nice to see you all here and to hear your input, and hopefully you'll keep that up. Thank you.
I also agree with that. Thank you for coming and giving your input. I also agree we should have a strategic plan.
I support a strategic plan. I believe it'll be part of the budget process for next year. And I'd like to thank everybody for their input. Thanks for coming.
Thank you for coming. It's nice to hear what the taxpayers want, for sure. We need a strategic plan, and I'd certainly like to see on the CIP the things we've been talking about for years before I was here. Senior Center and the Park Lake Trails not mentioned. Like to, so we need to think about it for a couple of weeks. I think that was a great idea.
All right, would you believe at 9:24, is that right?
Yep. I'm going to be adjourned.
We are, we have to vote.
Second.
Ms. How?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?